Good afternoon and welcome to the June meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. I call this meeting to order, and we do have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and start with the proceedings. You all should have received minutes of the regular meeting held on March the 15th. Are there any edits or additions that would better reflect the meeting?
I think so.
If not, the Chair would welcome a motion to accept, to approve as except, as prepared?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is the election of officers. Aye, the Chair and the Vice Chair will be rolling off this time, and we need to elect new, a new Chair and Vice Chair. Do we have any motions?
Well, I'll make a motion that we nominate Bill Jakes, Bill Jakes for Chair and Jeff Davis for Vice Chair.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion or any other nominations?
Can we take those one at a time?
One at a time?
Yeah.
Okay, for the Chair, Bill Jakes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Then for Vice Chair, Jeff, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, you get a designated parking place down in the garage now. You have got great benefits now. Okay, congratulations. Our first bit of business, 444 East College Street, Brad Chambers. Amelia, if you want to bring that up.
Yes. Brad Chambers is requesting changes from the approved plans of the design review meeting held in January of 2022 for a new single-family residence. It's currently under construction, pertains to a front porch, front steps, sidewalk, front porch columns, the dormer roof, chimney, and windows. This property is located on the south side of East College Street, several lots to the west of North Highland Avenue. The house was constructed circa 1900 in the vernacular style with a hipped roof, shingle style roof with a square plan, decorative cresting patio or porch, aluminum siding, classical porch. This house is a contributing structure in the North Maney Avenue Historical District of the National Historical Register of Historical Places. The property contains approximately .2 acres and is zoned RS Single Family Residential District and also the Historic Overlay District. It is also located in the CCO District, and on January 18th, 2022, the HCC approved the exterior, exterior remodel of the existing house. The house was utilized as a duplex and the applicant has returned it to a single-family dwelling unit, and during construction, some deviations to the approved plans were made by the applicant which are required discussion by the Historic Zoning Committee. The applicants are requesting to make modifications, a proposed one modification, the applicant wishes to change the dormer roof to a white standing seam metal instead of black shingle roof style that was approved. The second proposed modification is the windows installed at the time of the Historic Zoning approval were various types of windows with wood casings, and I have included photos in your agenda of the original windows as they were prior to construction. And the applicant wishes to discuss vinyl windows encased in wood on the side elevations due to the various different types of windows previously installed and irregular shapes of windows. The applicant also is, you'll see, he has had new columns made for it, he is not happy with those columns, he wants to make them larger. Right now, they are a smaller column. The steps in the sidewalk were, were concrete, and he has now bricked those, the sidewalk to the sidewalk out on the road and the steps as well to match the bottom portion of the house. It had been approved for the porch, the wood on the porch to stay and to be pressure washed and stained, that wood was rotten, he had to remove that, so now the porch is concrete with, encased in bricks, and those bricks follow into the steps and out to the front sidewalk. And then also, he was going to repair the chimney brick and replace the cap, and currently the chimney has been removed with no intentions of it being replaced. And these items are what he wishes to discuss with you today. The pictures as, as it exists today are in your agenda. We'll go through some of these. The ones, pictures that I have is the house in 2019 as it sat, and then in 2021 with the overgrown bushes in front where you couldn't hardly see the house. And then the house on the top is, the house to, to the west of the subject property, and the one on the lower part is the house to the east, which is a duplex. Of course, the house across the street, which is Mr. Thomas Jennings Homes that you all approved a couple of years ago, that is now complete, and then the house that Mr. Chambers is currently remodeling across the street from Thomas Jennings Homes. If you want, we can go through each of these one at a time. Jim, if you want to take off from there, and I will go through the pictures as they are listed to go along with the layout.
I think because of the confusion, that would be beneficial to the Commission to make sure we all understand this. What I want to understand is, if you'd like to come forward and present your case, what happened that there was an agenda of items that were approved in February? Why, why were they not followed?
Well, when we got into it, like the front porch, it was rotten, it was sitting on ground, there was no footing, it was sitting on nothing, and it was six to eight inches lower on the front than going into the house, so we had to.
Why didn't you come back before the Commission to seek approval? To change the material from wood to concrete?
I don't really have an answer for that. I guess we should have come back before laying the porch down, but it's the same, it's the same thing in the front of the, like Jennings House, we had talked about putting brick out around the front, so it was really the only thing that changed was concrete instead of taking the rotten wood up, and we put concrete back down.
Well, it also approved, it was a red brick, and now it's a sort of buff-colored model brick.
I think I showed an example that it was.
The minutes show, the letter to you show a red brick. Item number three. I'm not trying to pick on you, but I want it out there in the public that once these things are approved, if you have to change something in the field, you need to come back before the Commission to get approval to make a change. Otherwise, we could tell you to rip out the concrete slab on your front porch and put wood in. And none of us want to go there, you'd be unhappy, we'd be unhappy, and we're just trying to get the message out there to everyone that if you've got to make a change or get approval for something you've never had before, an addition, make sure you get approval because we could tell you to rip it off.
Let's see.
Let's go over number one then, the white standing seam metal roof or black shingle. Let's see, you want to put a white standing seam metal roof instead of black shingles on the dormer. Is that correct?
Yeah, and, and on the front porch because it doesn't have the slope for singles. It, it's a 212 pitch, that doesn't really work for shingles. It needs to be more like a 412, that's why, probably why it was leaking in the first place. I mean, we replaced all the rotten wood and everything.
Excuse me, Mr. Chambers, could you speak up just a little bit? I'm having a hard time.
I said, the reason, yeah, the reason we want to put standing seam roof instead of the shingles back is because it doesn't have the proper pitch. So for the next people, whoever purchases the house, you know, want to give them something that's going to last, and it just doesn't have the proper pitch for, for shingles.
I don't think I've seen a sample of a white metal.
I think there's, there's examples of sheet metal roofing in the packet, is that correct? Did you submit that to me?
That was in the original packet, it was discussed.
Was, was the white approved?
No.
It was neither what, it was discussed, and it was decided that, that the asphalt shingle would be the better of the two decisions.
I agree.
But the way that the minutes were read, it didn't really specify, and that's why the approval letter said either white, or a, a white sided, white aluminum roof or black shingles.
Have you purchased the white metal roof?
Not yet.
Can you pull up what was in the packet that we received for this meeting to show what the metal roof looks like? Because I think what is, is not a traditional standing seam metal roof, it's a more modern metal standing seam roof.
This American.
See, it has many more ridges than what the older standing seam is to stiffen the sheet so it doesn't oil can. We can't approve color, so you could put chartreuse up there and we couldn't say anything.
Yeah, I was just curious because I don't think I've ever seen it on a house. I've seen silver, I've never seen white.
I've seen silver, sure.
And I think Mr. Jennings is silver.
Yeah, well.
Or gray. It's a gray color.
Yeah, silver or gray is common, but just white, I've never seen. Supposedly historically, it was black, red, green, brown, and supposedly blue, but I've never seen a blue except on Captain D's.
It's prehistoric.
My question is, is the sheet metal roofing, since we're focusing on that and you want to put it up there, is that, is that form approved by the Commission?
And that would be the 26 gauge standing seam metal is what he had given me for.
Could you pull back up that, there you go. I don't know if the Commission can see that or not, but.
Yeah, I can, we.
Yeah, we can see it on here.
We have it on screen, Jim.
Okay. Any further questions of the applicant?
I'm confused if the, are you asking for the whole entire roof to be the standing seam product or?
Just the front porch where the, it doesn't have the proper slope, the, the proper pitch. I'm just looking out for, you know, the quality of the house.
So it's the porch and the dormer roof?
Yes.
Right, so my, my only concern would be with that, we did not approve something for another applicant a couple of months ago where it was two different.
Materials.
Materials on the roof. So, I don't, you know.
The house across to the left, it has, it has a metal front porch. It's an older house.
That may be, I didn't vote on that.
Yeah.
It's, it's very common to see an earlier house with a metal roof on the porch.
Yeah.
Because it's, it is a flatter roof. We've never had anybody that I'm aware of approach this about a dormer being too flat. If, if they were, are the shingles that are on there now, are those the final shingles?
Yeah, so the roof's getting replaced.
But it looks like it's, it's already been replaced, hasn't it?
No, I have not replaced the roof yet.
Not yet.
What color are you going to put up there? Not that it matters.
Black.
White?
Black.
Black. Have you considered black for the standing seam for the front porch and the dormer?
Not really, I was thinking silver. I was thinking just to match what everybody else had, like a silver color, that'd be what I'd go with.
The continuity might be, might be nice. Have it all one color.
All one color?
Mm-hmm. I said the continuity might be nice.
I think it wouldn't stick out.
Since it's not a, a real large house.
Yeah.
You know, you can do a lot with color to.
Accentuate.
Yeah, in large spaces. But, like, like Jim said, we, we don't have the authority for that. I think that might be something you'd want to think about, to have it all one color.
Any further questions of the applicant? Is there any further discussion of the profile of the metal roof?
No.
If not, the Chair would welcome a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Your motion's approved.
Thank you.
Wooden casings are to remain, the windows installed at the time, various types of windows with wood casings, photos have been included in the agenda package. What is the issue again here, Amelia?
Well, the photos that I went out and took around the home, I have included in the package, you can see that some of them, the wood around it is like it was just wood that was framed up around the windows. Some of the windows appeared to have been actually wood windows, but a lot of them were like metal, metal windows, you know, and, and louvered windows, and there were a lot of various sundry other types of windows besides wood windows on the house. It looks like they just kind of put some things in there to cover the hole.
They just saw a special at Home Depot and went and bought whatever was for sale.
Exactly. So, Mr. Jennings does have windows, sorry, Mr. Chambers does have windows for the front of the home, he is keeping the windows beside the doors, he is doing win, wood windows on both of the windows on the front of the house. Of course, the front of the house is not currently finished, as you can see, he hasn't yet put the window in where the door casing that he closed up was, but he is going to put a window back there. But he is going to keep all of the windows on the front as wood windows, but he would like some concession to maybe do a wooden casing with vinyl windows on the sides.
On the sides, okay.
Yes, yes. And these are just various pictures that I took, this was when they were removing that metal siding that was on the house, and I had to stop them to get Mr. Chambers to come in for his first meeting. And of course, these are the windows that he brought in because I was to approve windows after the meeting last time, and these are the style and type of windows that they brought in, and I did approve them as wood windows. And he's having difficulty finding the windows first and foremost after some time has passed, and then he just, he wanted to have a discussion with you about possibly doing vinyl on the sides of the house.
For you and the public out there, we can only approve what we can see from the right of way, so that would be the sides and the front, we can't see your back unless I guess there's an alley, but we can only approve those three elevations, so you, there was a door to the left of the front door, a French door that's been removed, and a window's going to go back. And it appears that the windows are, the sash are four over four. Will the windows, with the new window there where that French door was, it'll be four over four to match the one to the right?
What they did is they took that left window out and they put a door, because they made it a duplex, so I'm going to make it back to how it originally was.
But will it look like their original window to the right of the front door?
Yeah, we've got to put a, a transom at the top of the window because I can't find any windows that go that, they don't make windows that go from that high. It's like 117 inches, I think. So I think I've got to go back to 96 inches and put the rest transom at the top to get the wood window.
So it will look different than the other window on the front? Because there's no transom above the window to the right.
Yeah, but, they don't, right, I guess.
You can make a custom window is my point.
On the front?
Yeah.
And this window on the right is still there?
Right.
You're not having to redo.
But even when I went to go look at getting custom windows, that, with the wood and everything, it was just, almost impossible to find anybody, and the lead times up to a year out, if they'll even call you back, I mean, it's crazy. Like, that's the best I could find, a transom with 96 inch window.
What will the sash below the transom be? Four pieces of glass over four pieces of glass?
Mm-hmm. On the two front windows.
One's original and one's to the side.
What, one more time, what'd you say?
As you face the house, you've got the center door, the one to the right is original and will remain.
No, I replaced both windows.
So you took out an original window? I thought it was supposed to stay.
No, it was a door, it was, there was a, but I did replace.
Center door, then there's a left door, there's a French door that was for the other side of the duplex, right?
Right.
The other window, what was it? It looks like it's a window.
It's a window.
Is that window staying?
No, that window's busted up and the glass is missing out of it, and that's what I'm saying, I can't find another window that would even look close to that to put backward the door to the.
So you're taking the right window that's busted up, are you going to replace it with a new window with a transom as well?
That was the plan.
Okay.
Ah, okay. That's what I didn't understand.
At least, at least it'll match.
So they will, they will, basically, they're going to look the same, right?
Yeah, everything's going to look the same, and the front door's going to stay, the.
Side lights gonna stay.
The side lights, I might have to replace the glass in them, but other than that, it's going to be the same look.
So the windows and the door on the front are wood?
Yes.
Okay, I think we understand that now. Let's talk about the side windows. What are they, there's a multitude of sizes and types and whatever on the, on the sides of the house, it appears. What are you putting back there?
Well, right now, I've got vinyl windows in because I had to dry it in to continue in with the rough end, so I, I'd like to keep those windows in case they're mountain wood.
Will you repeat that last sentence, please?
Yes, ma'am. I had replaced all the side windows with vinyl windows.
Uh-huh.
Because I wanted to dry the house in to continue with the rough end and the electric and the plumbing and so forth with the project. What I'd like to do is put wood casing around the vinyl windows so you would, unless you had like a magnifying glass, you'd never know, you wouldn't ever see it from the road or it would just look like wood, but it would really be vinyl behind there.
So if I understand correctly, the vinyl windows are already in on the sides?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, because I drove by there, didn't I? I thought they looked like new windows. And then your plan is to encase the vinyl with wood on top of the vinyl?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I have curiosity, since I'm looking at this elevation, there is this stonework in the front, underneath the front porch, does that remain or did it get ripped out?
That's gone. That, that was, that wasn't real stone.
Yeah, it's, it's what I call lick and stick or fake stone.
Actually, it was metal, wasn't it?
It was metal.
It was metal?
It was metal.
It was around the house in several places, I was shocked when I walked up on it.
When you removed the vinyl or the aluminum siding, that came off with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it'll be LP smart board, so.
Is there any consistency with these new vinyl windows from one side to the other? Is it just a hodgepodge like every?
No, they're all the same.
Are they?
Who they are?
Are they the?
Well.
Are they the tall ones like this one here with the window unit in the bottom?
No, no.
Did you raise the seal of them up because you couldn't get them that tall?
Right, they're framed in a little bit, wait, um, yeah. I framed them, framed them in a little bit.
Are they narrow this way or height-wise?
Height-wise.
What's a little bit to you? Foot, two, three, four feet?
Yeah, at least a foot.
And, and what kind of sash are they? It looks like it's an applied mutton, it's not a real true divided sash. Pieces of glass, is it truly, is it one big sheet in each sash and it's just got an applied mutton on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it four over four or, or one over one?
Yeah, it's, if I remember correctly, it's four over four.
And they're all basically four over four on the sides to where, and are the ones on the front with the transom, are they four over four?
Yeah, the ones with the transom would be four over four.
So in many respects, you're cleaning up the chaos that was in the house.
Mm-hmm. And putting back wood where there was aluminum and single-family house again, bunch of good things.
What additional questions does the Commission have of the applicant?
Chairman Thompson, we, so we have jurisdiction on the side windows, they are visible.
Yes, yes. Anything we can see from the way I look at it, anything we can see from the sidewalk?
Amelia, can you go back to that side elevation, one more back? Oh, no, that, that one there, can you put that up on the big screen for Jim to see? Because I think that's.
That was when I stopped them from doing work before, that is not what is currently the status of the home. I thought I had photos in here. I thought I had photos in here.
I was just wondering if that was the new window.
Height?
Yeah.
That's the best view I've got, apologies.
Well, that's the front out, the end of that's-
He's looking for the side.
I was looking for the-
The sides of them, you can see the windows from the road.
The side windows?
You can see the side windows from the road.
You can.
You can.
There's no question.
Well, that one, one picture, I think that was the new window, wasn't it? Because you've, you've replaced those windows on the side with the vinyl?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Keep going, Amelia.
We'll get started.
Yeah. See how much shorter it is? There's a window unit below it.
Yeah.
I think she stated this was prior to the windows being installed.
I think the window size is a 3070 is what I put in there. Which wouldn't be, I think it's about the same size.
In this photo, is this the original window?
That's the original window.
Okay.
And so, did you put it in central heat and air?
Oh, yeah, everything, the whole house has been reframed and totally gutted, everything. It's got, yeah.
Except the kitchen sink.
Yeah, the whole thing's been redone.
What further questions does the commission have of the applicant?
No.
While we're on windows, I was curious, your dormer up top, there's five windows that were in there originally. In one of the illustrations I saw, like a four panel in each of those five windows. Is that your intent or is it going to be each window with a solid pane?
It's a solid window, five, five solid windows across.
And that's what was originally there?
Yeah, those were like two by twos.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
So we're going back-
The four panel picture in the, in the mock-up kind of threw me a little bit there. Just wanted to clarify.
And did you, what about, tell us about the fireplace, why you no longer need a chimney?
It's a closet now.
I'm sorry?
It's a closet where the fireplace was.
Oh.
Let's, let's go back to finish this one item and then we'll come back to the, I'm sorry to, to cut you off, but let's, let's do the windows. So you've heard what he's going to do on the front porch with the windows and you've heard what he's going to do on the two sides. The rear, we can't control. Is there a motion by the commission related to this work? This aspect of it?
I have one more question concerning the transoms on the front. There is a transom over the front door currently, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
A little transom window. So in both side windows, you're proposing a transom over each of those, right? So there would be some kind of symmetry with the front door there?
Yeah, I got to get, the tallest window I could find would be 96 inches. So the rest of it has to be a transom, if you wanted to go all the way to the porch.
I understand the reasoning. I wanted to make sure that there was a transom there over the front door as well. Just so there's something to tie to, to make rhyme or reason of that transom there.
Right.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Any further questions of the applicant? If not, the chair would welcome a motion regarding the windows on the front porch and the side elevations. And this is to replace them with vinyl on the sides and wood on the front. Are the transoms wood or vinyl?
Transoms will be wood. The whole front window would be wood.
And I'm not sure if, if I misunderstood, but I think Amelia, you said the vinyl windows are going to be clad in wood. No?
The vinyl would, the vinyl windows will be wrapped in one trim from the outside.
It's a casing trim, it's not, it's not covering the vinyl parts of the sash, it's just the frame. It's like a picture frame.
Yeah, just the picture frame will be wood.
Okay. Pretty much what's there.
Have we approved vinyl windows previously?
We have always rejected them, as far as I can remember.
That's what I'm wondering about.
Well, I don't know what happened with you.
They had exist, they, they had existing-
I must have not been there that day. Was I?
There were existing vinyl in those.
They were existing.
Oh, existing vinyl?
Yes. What I read in the minutes, that there were existing vinyl in the windows they had.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're okay. Don't you? I move that we accept the, the windows as presented to us today.
And Amelia, you, the minutes will reflect that the windows in the front are wood and the ones on the sides are vinyl and they're going to be, have a wood casing trim around them?
Yes.
That I'm assuming will be painted.
Thank you. That's, that's what I'm moving.
I just want to make sure, I'm sorry for clarifying. I want to make sure, I don't want you to come back. I want this, the minutes to reflect this.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. It carries. Let's talk about the front columns. This is the part I didn't understand. In, in February, you wanted to replace the columns with square taper columns and that appears to have been approved, is that correct? They were round columns in the first photograph.
Yes.
Amelia, can you tell if they were approved in the February meeting to remove the round columns for a square?
It was approved for him to have, he asked for square ones at the original meeting and that was approved and they were going to be handmade. The, if you look, I can get the, I can get what he gave us for the columns to be replaced that were approved. And he had stated that they would be large, I want a six inch maybe tapered. But the ones, this was just, these were just for representation of what the possible look would be. He was having them made. They were supposed to taper and have caps at the bottom and the top.
So in this picture, that was what was installed in the bottom, correctly?
Yes, sir, I just thought they should be a little thicker.
And then we had a, there's so many pages in this 87-page document for us to try to figure out what the heck is going on. One of them is for a bungalow styled taper column. I'm still trying to get there. Is it one of these columns you want to put up now? The bungalow column?
No, I want, I want exactly what I have, I just-
So you don't want the-
Just a little thicker.
What, what is a little thicker to you? If it's six inches, what do you want it, eight inches, 12 inches?
Yeah, I just didn't like how they did them, how my framers put them up.
Well, we need to know to approve what size you want.
Under 10. So, uh-
And are, are you changing them to round columns or keeping the square?
Square.
Okay.
And they'll be wood?
They're MDF board, so yes.
Related to the columns going to 10 inches or less, what other questions does the commission have of the applicant?
Originally, they were round.
Yeah.
PVC when I took them down.
Again?
They were PVC. I accidentally backed into one with the trailer and it broke in half, so, oh, okay.
These are framed of MDF, what, what is inside of there to support that?
Four by four.
Four by four, so it's approximately a six by six now?
Yeah.
After you've wrapped them? So you propose to probably wrap them one more time with-
That's probably what I'll do, is just go over it one more time.
Okay.
Any further questions of the applicant related to enlarging the columns? If not, the chair would welcome a motion regarding the columns.
Make a motion, we approve the columns as submitted?
Second.
So we have a, a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
It's up to 10 inches, right?
10 inches or less, uh-huh, up to 10. Any further questions regarding this particular item?
You will retain the casing at the tops and the bottoms, similar style as you have right now?
Yep.
Okay. No further questions.
All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Concrete cap to existing steps and sidewalk to street. This is regarding changing the front steps and sidewalk to brick, is that correct, Amelia?
The porch.
And the porch being concrete?
Mm-hmm, porch being concrete. And the brick, it was already approved around the bottom. It's just the porch or the steps and the sidewalk, which, that's the best picture I could get because it was-
I'd like to break it into three things. One, the concrete slab, the brick around the porch edge is not red brick as the minutes note. And then the sidewalk and steps are brick. Does the brick, when it goes on the sidewalk, does it go out to the main city sidewalk? Is there a step there?
Yeah.
There's, there's no step till you get to the house.
I'm sorry?
There is no step till you get to the house. It's like-
Okay. Let's, let's go over the issue then of the front porch. Instead of the approved wooden porch being pressure washed and stained, it's now concrete. Is there any question from, any comments from the commission regarding this change?
Well, yes, there, there is because, you know, you've moved along without approval. I just think we need to reiterate that that's not the way it works. And I'm concerned about brick. And then when I look at the front of the finish on the, around, on the foundation area, so, so you're using red brick and then this brick that's, that we see in the photo that you've done?
It's all the same brick around the whole house.
Oh, so you, there's no red, red brick involved?
The red brick was on the original draft of the drawing that was proposed at the previous meeting.
And it was on the chimney that's no longer there?
There you go. It was, it was proposed as red to start with.
Well, I think I said that I wanted to copy Mr. Jennings across the street and his had a little white tint to it too, so.
It just didn't make the minutes, so we, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
So let's go over the issue of the concrete porch floor. Is there any heartache or comment that the commission wants to make?
Is the revised proposal to leave it as is now?
To leave it as concrete.
Is there any, just, just to clarify, you're not proposing to cover this or paint this? It, your request is to now leave it as is?
Yeah, the whole front porch is pretty much done.
What further questions does the commission have of the applicant? Regarding this issue. Had you considered like putting wood on top of the concrete slab? I know that's very weird, but trying to keep the original request?
I would have kept the original, but when we got into it, I mean, it wasn't sitting on anything. The whole house pretty, wasn't sitting on but, anything but the ground. We had to put flutters and everything around the, the whole thing. So.
Sadly, any addition's going to, how are you going to trim it in?
It's going to be a trip hazard.
What did you just say, Bill? Excuse me?
I, I said sadly, any addition of material is going to create an issue here. It's going to, you, you're going to have to trim it out somehow. It's going to be above the brick. It's, so I, I don't see any real action that could be taken to, to, to make this look like the original request.
Is there a motion to accept the change, just so we can clear this up for record's sake?
Seeing no other real clear alternative, I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? These are the kind of changes I want to get out to the public, don't be making without approval by the commission. This, this is, this can be actually very, you know, problematic. I just saw something in here. This roof, the beam goes straight. Here, this roof is angled, so you've got a triangle there that was never there. What are you filling in that triangle there with?
Can you? Oh, it's going to have beatboard. It's going to be wood.
So you changed the slope of the roof of the porch?
Oh, it was a flat roof, safety.
I think it may have been a hip roof before and now it appears to be a shed. Regardless, it is what it is, you're going to cover it with siding? Is it going to be vertical or horizontal?
Siding, I was thinking maybe the beatboard like I'd put underneath the whole, the wood.
Underneath the porch rafters?
Mm-hmm. Or siding.
I think the siding would be better look, be less busy.
Right.
And then he's going to have the gutters on there as well, four inch gutters.
Well, he only needs the gutter across the front now, not the two sides.
Right.
Let's, let's, let's carry on then with the steps and the sidewalk are now bricked. What questions does the applicant, does, does the commission have of the applicant?
Since it's covered in plywood, is, is the field of the sidewalk brick or is it, it's just cased in brick?
The whole sidewalk, it's like hair and bone.
Hair and bone brick?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That's a nice touch.
Any further questions or comments from the commission? If not, the chair would welcome a motion regarding the sidewalk and the brick.
I make a motion, we approve the sidewalk in the, with brick?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. It looks like our last item is the removal of the chimney, is that correct, Amelia?
Yes, sir.
So you removed the chimney because the fireplace went away because it's now a closet or a bathroom or something?
Yes, sir.
I remember discussions in several years ago where the loss of the vertical elements of chimneys, and I think we actually revised our design guidelines to make sure you leave chimneys as much as possible, even if they're not being used. And granted, if you've got a bathroom there, you don't want a chimney sitting over your head. But I'd like to get out there to the public that, you know, do everything you possibly can and inspect them on a regular basis to make sure the mortar between the bricks is good, in good condition and not deteriorated so that you have to take it down and, and protect your interest of your house. But this was removed because it was a functional issue, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions or comments from the commission?
I think it's too bad that it won't have a chimney. I guess maybe it's because I'm used to it all these years. But there seems to be, um, I don't know. I think it makes the roof look less interesting. Less dimension to it.
That was part of my reasoning earlier on regarding that. It significantly changes the interest of the roof.
Mm-hmm. Well, I wanted to leave it too, but it just wasn't, it didn't make sense. So, but I am going to put back a, a gas fireplace in the living room so it doesn't really help with the roof line or whatever, but.
Is it a ventless gas fireplace?
Um, I'm not exactly sure. Um, I'm not exactly sure how.
Well, if it's gonna be vented through the roof, you'll have to come back before us.
Okay.
Any further questions with the applicant regarding the removal of the chimney?
No. I think we should reiterate what you just said, Jim. We, we ran into this problem of years ago where the people came to us after the fact.
Yeah.
We had no, we had no recourse, really. And I don't know how we can get the information out to people who, who buy or remodel in the historic district. We've, we've tried to depend on the realtors to do that, but that hasn't worked. And I don't know, Amelia, somehow if we could, we could get our little handbook, our little, um,
pamphlet or whatever.
Pamphlet into, into viewers' hands. I don't know how, I guess we just have to monitor what's going on. If a house goes up for sale, you know, get it in the hands of the realtor, because because we're constantly fighting this thing of, well, I didn't know. I didn't know, I didn't know there was a historic district. Well, you know, those of us who live in the historic district want to take care of our historic district. And somehow, we've gotta get the word out there. And, and, and stop using, I don't know. I guess that's it.
If there's any, are there, is there any other further discussion regarding this item? If not, the chair would welcome a motion regarding the chimney.
I'd like the motion to approve the changes.
Approve the, approve the removal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Is there anything else related to this? Amelia, are you aware of anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. I think we've gone over all your items, I don't, I don't think there's anything else. And thank you for coming before us, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
What is our next bit of business, Amelia?
Well, let's see, the next bit.
Two oh eight North Manny?
Yes, sir. That is correct. Requesting to enclose an existing covered patio. This property is on the east side of North Manny Avenue, Avenue about midways between East College Street and East Lidle Street. This house was constructed in around nineteen forty-five in the vernacular style architecture with a gabled roof and stone detailing. This was a non-contributing structure in the, uh, North Manny Avenue Historic District of the National Historic Register Places. And the property contains approximately point two six acres. And is owned to RS eight, single-family residential and historic overlay district, as well as the CCO overlay district. Property was originally a single-family home, and then it was converted to a three-family dwelling in the early nineteen eighties and was rehabilitated into a two-family dwelling unit by, by the applicant before you today in two thousand and fifteen. Changes to the property were discussed and approved at two different Historic Zoning Commission meetings. One on October twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, and a special Historic Zoning Committee meeting on October twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen. The minutes of those meetings were in your agenda package. Photographs of the adjacent properties. Two oh eight Manny Avenue to the left. Let's see, two oh eight, okay. Two oh eight North Manny to the left is included in, in the materials for comparison. Two twenty-four North Manny Avenue is not located in the East Main Historic District. And there's a triplex dwelling unit located on the south side of the property, on the southeast corner of the intersection of North Manny Avenue and East College Street, which is now a non, which is also a non-contributing structure on the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The applicants are requesting to convert a covered patio added to the home in two thousand and eighteen into an enclosed addition to the home. Due to the privacy fence, this covered patio, patio addition is only partially visible from the right away, was not approved by the Historic Zoning Committee, and has no building permits. The applicant has submitted drawings for the side and rear elevations with, which deplex the proposed addition at the rear of the property. Also included in the agenda are the photographs of existing street view conditions. Materials proposed for the side elevation will match the existing cementitious siding material and stone fireplace to match the existing fireplace on the same elevation. And if approved by the Planning Commission, the applicant will be required to work with the Building and Codes Department to obtain all necessary permits for existing structures that were never permitted, as well as any proposed work. Applicant is in attendance to answer any questions that the commission may have, as well as myself.
If you'd like to come before, give your name and address?
I'm Jeff Neely, and this is my wife Tamara, two oh eight North Manny.
What further can you add to your request that Amelia didn't suggest?
Pretty much covered it.
Your sketches show, let's see, on the wall with the fireplace will have no windows, is that correct?
No windows, no.
And the other windows and a pair of doors will be on the back elevation, correct? And so we cannot see the back elevation to review anything about it?
No, the, actually, the windows that we're gonna use are coming out of the existing house.
Just bringing it out.
To the back.
Yeah.
Not buying any new windows at all.
Your fireplace that's on the side, the right side of the house appears to be limestone, is that correct? So this will be limestone?
I was gonna use a manufactured stone that simulated limestone.
Aeroscraft or something like that?
Something of that nature. I hadn't picked it out yet, but that was manufactured.
It's gonna be a wood box, or so to speak, with, uh, again, I call it lick and stick.
Yeah.
Fake stone.
Yeah.
And it'll be mortared?
Yes.
Where it looks the same?
Yeah, there is, uh, actually, if you've got pictures of the house, there is a lick and stick chimney on the left that is no longer, there's no chimney on the inside. There was no burning furnace when we bought the house. I took that out, but I've got a fake chimney on the left side of the house. There'll actually be three chimneys on the house.
I think you, Mike, can see that just barely in the back, that, right at the treetop, right here.
Oh, okay. It just barely sticks above the roof?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So all we can see is that the little where the roof of the shed covering the patio comes down, I'm grabbing numbers, two feet?
Yeah, roughly, two, two and a half.
You're gonna take, I'm assuming, that off and then take siding all the way up to that roof?
Yes, I'm not married to whether I go vertical with the hardy board that's on the house or do a, a board and batten hardy board, so I could go either way if you have a preference.
Certainly, I think it would match if you did it to match the house.
It does, I would just, uh, the house at the corner of Lidle and Manny has a combination of both.
Combination.
Judy's old house.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, new construction.
But the roof, as you look in the back, this this side of the roof over your, over your patio aligns with the side of the house?
Yes, it does, mm, yes.
And if it were set back, that roof to transition to another type of siding, it would make more sense. Otherwise, it appears you're gonna go out to the corner of the house.
Right, there's a, a corner board there, I think it's a six-inch corner board that
Yeah.
the Hardy would butt into.
Butt into.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it comes down to an aesthetic thing. You do have the fence up there.
Yes.
How tall is that fence?
Six foot.
I can just, I'll speak for myself, I think the horizontal siding would look better, but.
Like I said, it's fine by me, I'm not married to either one of them, so.
I am, I like horizontal.
We'll save you guys some grief then.
Y'all won't have to arm wrestle tonight. Any further discussion or questions of the applicant?
I just wanted to ask about the new roof that you'll be putting on, that, that will have the slight slope to it as well as the one doesn't have.
I'm not changing anything on the roof, it's already there.
I'm sorry?
I'm not changing anything on the roof, it's already there.
Okay.
And it's asphalt, right?
Asphalt shingles.
It's a rolled roofing.
Rolled asphalt.
Rolled asphalt, the pitch is not sufficient to handle. I tried the standing seam and I just fought leaks the whole time and replaced it with asphalt.
You can do rubber sometimes, or TPO, or whatever, too. Uh, any additional comments or questions of the applicant?
For what it's worth, I'd like to point out, um, I'm the neighbor to the north. And because of the placement of the garage that's behind this, I, I can't even see this addition from my yard, so it is completely invisible.
I think we should, in, in the motion, are we gonna determine about the siding? Vertical or horizontal?
Whoever wants to make the motion.
Okay.
You want to make the motion?
I will. I move that we, um, approve the addition and the, and the enclosure of the, of the back porch with, um, horizontal siding.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I'd like to add to it, I think the exposure of the siding be the same as the house, to say it's exposed.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm grabbing a number, eight inches, six inches, whatever it is, that it matches, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, it is.
Uh, okay.
I don't know that it matters, but we're gonna raise that floor up so that it's level with the main structure of the house, so there's not gonna be a step down to it.
Yeah, that's smart. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to allow the modification with horizontal siding? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Any further discussion or any, any other business?
Have no other additional business.
If not, does anybody in the commission have any further business? If not, then the chair will.
I do.
Okay.
I just, I'm gonna go back to what I was talking about. Getting, getting the information out to people who are moving into our district.
Yeah.
I, Bill, do you have any ideas?
Well, I'm glad you asked me. Actually, after Mr. Chambers came before us the first time, I did reach out to the Middle Tennessee Association of Realtors and actually filmed a podcast with them and, and gave them a bunch of information about our historic district in, in an effort to have them send out information to the whole membership. And, and that did happen. Who subscribed, watched, I don't know, but I can say at least that the, the Middle Tennessee Association of Realtors did make an effort to, to raise awareness about our historic district after, after that.
And we are working with the state to try to get a meeting together with M.T.A.R., Middle Tennessee Realtors Association, to come in and do an actual meeting with them. They just did one in Lebanon. However, Lebanon was kinda closed to the Lebanon Realtors, so we discussed it with the, uh, director at the Tennessee Historical Society, or Tennessee Historical Office. And they're gonna try to get one in the fall for our Realtors as well. And I'm gonna discuss with our director a possibility of a mail-out to all of the addresses in the historic district. Just, you know, it's gonna go to the home and a lot of, you know, some of the homes on East College, there are a lot of apartments there, but not all of them. But we can see if we can get a mail-out list together and send out the brochure and some information.
That would, that would, I think that would help. I know that, um, Robert had those brochures, and he did try, um, to contact people, new people in the district, but nothing beforehand, you see? So it was kind of after the fact as well, if they didn't realize that they were in the historic district and they bought the house.
Unfortunately, I, I'm not out in the field every day doing historic zoning. I have, you know, um, other responsibilities within the office. It's hard to keep up with that, what everybody's doing in the historic district if you don't go look at it every day.
In the life of a house and Realtor, from your perspective, what triggers anything in City Hall that some, a new owner is buying or has bought a house? Anything at all?
There's a transfer, isn't there?
Does that?
For tax purposes, and could they be flagged?
Well, I know in Mattin, Nashville, if you go down there and you're dealing with an historic house, apparently the Metro Historical Commission has gone around and tagged every property they have an interest in to see what's gonna happen to it as it evolves. Somebody buys it, they wanna add on, they wanna tear it down, they, whatever, it triggers it. And it goes to the Metro Historical Commission, and they, they respond about what they are hearing and are being told. Is, is there any way to add a little box beside each address that's in the, in the, in our historic district to say, okay, you're buying an historic house, a house in a historic district, and here's a pamphlet that's yours?
We get a list of homes or properties that sell, but they're not segregated out in any fashion. It's just a list of everything that's sold in Rutherford County.
I think what, what Ms. Anderson alluded to earlier with what Robert did was Robert painstakingly went through the list of transfers that we get from the Register of Deeds Office manually to flag, um, properties that were located in the historic zoning district. And it's not the most efficient way to do that. But to answer your question, I don't know if there's, if there is a more efficient way that we could go about doing that, but I certainly think it would be a worthwhile endeavor to, to improve our notification to those new owners.
I think, Matthew, I think it's, it's really important, because we, we have this discussion
All the time.
all the time, ever since I've been on the commission and before.
We even had, one applicant.
People come to us after the fact, and we have no weight.
Yeah. We had one applicant, that both the husband and the wife were both real estate agents, and they were ripping windows out when we stopped them.
I think it'll get worse, too, as people rehab these, continue to rehab these older properties.
And I don't know what the.
Mr. Chambers said, you don't know what you're getting into.
Yeah. I don't know what the turnover is, or the influx of new Realtors are, that.
It's pretty heavy.
If they don't get indoctrinated, you know, when they first come to work here, it's your, fill out this for your insurance card, fill out this, this is where you park, the bathroom's down there, the refrigerator, don't eat that food.
Yeah.
I mean, unless they get the pamphlet, they're not gonna know. So that's why I'm figuring, there's gotta be someplace at City Hall on a computer. I don't know how many, I don't know how many houses or structures are in the district. Let's just say there's three hundred, it doesn't really matter. I don't know how much trouble it would be to get somebody, some computer guru, your kid's old enough probably to do computer programming. Most six-year-olds know how to do it. And put a little box there that when it's, changes hands, it automatically says, okay, it's in a historic district, send it out.
Yeah, I think, I think it's something that we'd have to get with the property assessor's office, because they update our GIS system, update the ownership information in our GIS system. And, and if it's something that can, you know, if we can maybe give them the boundaries of our Historic Zoning Commission and say, is there any way, is there anything that we can put in our system to, to notify us when a property changes hands? But I think, I think we can, we can work on getting you some information and, and have a staff report at our next meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, if you could have us a report and update on it next time, that would be beneficial. And that would flag the fact that some of them are rental units and have multiple people, multiple apartments in there, because we don't care when they're coming and going, it's when they change his hands by the owner. And that way, we know that they're getting this information, they can't do it.
A new tenant wouldn't generate a transfer like an owner should.
No, it wouldn't do anything at all. I was kinda tough on this guy, but, but you just can't go get approval of one thing, well, I don't like that, I'm gonna change it to this. Well, we had every right to tell them to rip out a bunch of that stuff, every right. And it sets a precedent to the public that, oh, you allowed that.
I know, you are exactly right, Jim, and that's what I don't, I get really anxious about it. Because I know, you are exactly right, Jim, and that's what I don't, I get really anxious about it, because lots of times, I don't really want to approve it, but I don't feel like we have any weight, any bite. And I know we've made some mistakes along the way, and we've okayed things that we shouldn't have. So I'm trying to live by our mistakes, but I think getting some information to these homeowners would help us.
So there are fewer people asking for forgiveness and more people asking for permission?
Exactly. I don't like beating up anybody who made a mistake, and they were in the throes of renovation, and the wood was rotten, it was sitting on the ground, and they're thinking, oh, my God, what do I do? So I'm gonna pour a masonry foundation and a new slab, and I don't have to worry about it. Check that off my list and keep going. I'm just like, but yeah, but you didn't get approval.
Yeah, we can certainly begin researching that and have a staff report for you at our next meeting.
I'd appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Matthew.
Sure.
Have we officially canceled? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Well, you had a good one.